This meeting to order, would you please take the roll?
Chair Batista?
Here.
Vice Chair Harrison?
Here.
Commissioner Betcher?
Present.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Stenson?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
We see them.
Can you hear me Commissioner Morgan?
There he is.
Commissioner Landis?
All right, so we can see Commissioner Morgan is logged in, but he's muted, so we'll...
Commissioner Landis is also here, I'm promoting him to panelists.
Oh, great. Excellent. Make sure Commissioner Landis can hear us. Saw him unmute for a second, but he muted, but... Either way, they're both here, so we'll go ahead and move on. So item number three, approval of the March 25th, 2024 meeting minutes, does anybody have any changes or corrections to those? I'm not hearing or seeing any, just double checking with our online commissioners. Not hearing or seeing anything from them, so we'll go ahead and declare those accepted as presented. Item number four, a public comment, is there anybody in person who'd like to make a public comment tonight?
There is no one currently in the audience, and no one has submitted a request online.
All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to item number five, recap of the April 3rd, 2024 CPAG meeting.
All right, good evening, Chair Batista, Vice Chair Harrison, members of the Planning Commission. This agenda item should be covered under the comp plan update, just as a note. So I think we'll just get right into the slideshow that we have prepared. Let's see. All right, sorry about that. So Jonathan Morales, Senior Planner at City Mountain Terrace, I'm joined with Sierra Carson, our consultant from OTAC, and Mandy Roberts, who's joined online, supporting us today with this presentation. So today, the topics of discussion are the environment and recreation parks and open space element, as well as we wanted to provide a brief recap of the April 3rd CPAG meeting, as well as some updates on engagement, planning. We have about 60 minutes dedicated to review of Planning Commissioner comments on the environment and our posed goals and policies review matrix. We'll distribute the economic vitality element goals and policies matrix for review. And then, we wanted to set aside some time to present some preliminary numbers from the draft growth alternatives, allocations of housing, job, and population numbers. So on April 3rd, we had our monthly CPAG meeting, so this meeting was focused on the economic vitality and transportation element. Planning Commissioners, sorry, not Planning Commissioners, the CPAG added feedback on the policy concepts that were presented for economic vitality and transportation. It was attended by our traffic engineer here at the city, as well as our transportation consultant that's supporting the work on the transportation element and the TMP, the Transportation Master Plan. So that's fair and peers. There were no online participants at this meeting, so there wasn't a virtual workshop component. And just some highlights of this was there was a question on how CPAG input informs the version of the goals and policies that Planning Commission receives for review. So there was a response to that question from one of the CPAG members. Sierra, or also Commissioner Betcher, if you'd like to add on anything from that meeting?
Yeah, I think it's worthwhile to think about how we work with CPAG and take in their input, because it's really important. I do try to give little updates here and there, you know, after every meeting that there is a CPAG event. But if you all have any thoughts, or if you feel like you're not getting clear direction, please let me know.
Great. And then, just, we did get some general support for the policy concepts, and then, some common themes that come up is just recommendations for providing more clarity, or asking questions related to how can the city implement this? So a lot of questions that are implementation focused. And there was a lot of discussion on the economic vitality element in particular. So for engagement, as you know, we're planning a spring 2024 engagement series, where we're collecting feedback on a recommended vision statement, elements in progress, which include the land use, housing, rec, parks, and open space, and environment elements. As we continue to get into the other elements, we'll provide some updates on that. So we have an online open house component to supplement the in-person open house that was held on March 26th here in council chambers, which we'll have a recap of in the next slide. Subareas planning, Melody Hill and Cascade View will be collecting feedback, or hosting some, an open house or workshop in the subareas. Let's see. So we're partnering with the Vida Agency, coordinating engagement activities. And then, we have a draft EIS that is targeted for publishing in late spring, early summer, so thinking about mid-June or so. And that will be a time where we'll have a public meeting and an open comment period for community feedback on the draft alternatives being studied in the EIS, as well as potential impacts related to those alternatives. So some strategies for this spring that we're planning for are INTERCEPT surveys, so having, surveying at local businesses, the food bank, Concerned for Neighbors Food Bank. So these are opportunities to meet people where they're at, so catching people while they're out shopping, or waiting in line at the food bank, some other, surveying at BIPOC businesses, so Black Indigenous People of Color businesses. Small work, group workshops, briefings, interviews, or listening sessions. So we have one that we're planning for at the Mountain Lake Terrace High School for some time in May. So we'll be meeting with some student leaders to plan for that event. There's a group here in town, it's a group of Latina women, who are interested in learning more about the comp plan, so we would like to approach them and have a briefing session with them to present ideas of the comp plan and get their input and feedback, as well as meeting with face-based organizations through a workshop of sorts, or a focus group. And then, continued discussions with the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission, so presenting policies and progress, especially those that are highlighted as equity-related policies. Pop-up events, so we have some spring and summer events, and tabling opportunities. So some summer engagement that we know of right now is some, attending the Tour de Terrace, National Night Out, and 3rd of July event. And again, the subarea planning work is still in progress, but we're planning for that in May, and so you'll hear more about that in a later meeting. Sierra, would you like to?
So, last time we gathered, we were planning for the March 26th open house, and we had it. It was, I think, a great success. We had about 35 to 40 members of the public arrive here in the council chambers and participate in our open house. We had these lovely boards around for folks to provide their feedback, both doing some visual surveys, as well as providing sticky note comments to answer some questions about priorities, projects, interests, things that people want to see happen in land use, housing, recreation parks, and environment. We also provided, just to sort of show the public where we're at, the same goal and policy concepts that have been presented, and we've gotten feedback from CPAG, just to continue that conversation about what are the goals of the comprehensive plan, and what are the types of things that the city will do to meet those goals. So we wanted to provide the public with an opportunity to show us and tell us what their priorities were, and what they liked about what is currently being proposed. There is also, we handed out several different questionnaires that were the print versions of the questions that you see on these large boards, for people to give individual responses to. And the same questions are all available still online through the city's website for additional, or we're taking additional comment from those who were unable to meet the, attend the in-person event. I do believe this is our last slide on the engagement update, before we move on to the environment and parks workshop.
So this might be a good time, if there's any questions, before we get into that?
Anybody have any questions?
I have a question. How are you identifying the underrepresented groups on the outreach in our surveys? And how are you measuring that?
Yeah, so we, through our initial survey push, we realized that we weren't getting enough input from certain areas in our community. We heard a lot from, a lot of feedback from various bodies, so Planning Commission, CPAG, and council about our engagement approach, and realized that it was appropriate time to think this through and bring on another consulting group to support us with that more targeted engagement. So the Vida Agency did some, we went into contract with them to do some more target engagement, and they did some initial on-the-ground engaging with communities, utilizing their existing networks as well. So there's a couple of folks on the team that actually have connections here in town, and live here, or used to live here as well. So utilizing their networks to reach those groups that are underrepresented in this engagement effort, to come up with a refined engagement approach. As far as metrics and tracking, I'm not sure what their approach is, so I can't really speak to that at this moment.
Cool, are you able to identify any of the groups who are having trouble reaching at this meeting? Or is that something they're gonna share? I mean, I'd be interested to hear mostly, just like how effective we are.
Yeah, I don't have that with me right now, but I'm sure at a later meeting, we can get that to you.
Anyone else? Double check with our online commissioners, if they have any follow-up questions? I am not hearing or seeing any indications, so I think we can go ahead and move on.
Okay. So on the environment and recreation parks and open space element policy discussion, we distributed the policy matrix matrices on March 25th, which gave Planning Commissioners about a week to provide any comments or feedback. So today, the purpose is to discuss those comments. As far as I know, we received comments from four commissioners. So this discussion would also be an opportunity for those that were not able to submit their comments. If you'd like to add anything, provide your feedback. There'll also be additional opportunities to submit those comments, since we'll continue to work through the policies as we get closer to a draft plan. So Sierra, do you want to take it over from here?
So tonight, we're going to sort of verbally walk through some of the high-level feedback we received from the group on the parks and recreation, or we're gonna do environment first. So we're gonna walk through the high-level findings on the comments on the environment element goals and policies. And then, we'll open it up if anyone wants to add any additional context to the comments that they left, and then finish it up with additional comments that were not included in the commissioner packets. So on environment, things that we heard on goal number one, which is really the goal that's focused on policies that are implementing, you know, critical area regulations. So how are we protecting our natural areas? The feedback we got here was really to clarify what is happening in code versus what is happening in policy. It's pretty standard practice on this types of topics to have policy that is covering those same topics as code, just because it gives a holistic view of what is happening to run city governance. But there is, I think, ways we can make that connection clearer and provide more context where it might be needed, such as the connections back to the Growth Management Act, or to the Shoreline Master Plan, or to Fish and Wildlife Habitat. So those have been noted, and we'll make sure to provide additional information moving forward as we provide the plan. On goal number two, which is our goal about engaging with the community and active public participation and education in the environmental planning process, we did receive many comments about, you know, what it means to just educate the public on these things versus what the city can actively do to achieve some of these policy items. So we have a number of topics that we'll be going through, as be revise these draft policies to identify where there could be more city action, or clarify maybe the implementation for some of this work. We also can provide in the future more information, or it could be a discussion about how to include the, more information about the tribal communications, and what that looks like for existing environmental review, and what the future of that communication could look like. We did receive some additional policy recommendations on this goal from Commissioner Betcher on lighting and noise pollution. So that's one of those things that we've taken those comments, only going back and seeing what makes sense to include here is policy versus regulation, and what might be, make sense in place-making as well, because I think some of these all tie it back together. On goal number three, about trees, again, a kind of a common concept that, this thread that's following through here is really what makes sense to have as a policy versus what makes sense to be in code. Because this policy, this goal on trees, many of the policies do overlap with some of the new tree code regulations. So it's one of the places where we could have more discussion here tonight, on specifically, what does this goal mean, and what should be prioritized, versus what might be able to be left just in code. On goal number four, on, which reads to take actions, promote environmental resiliency, we heard a lot here about, you know, how do we measure some of these issues? How are we going to track resiliency? How are we going to track our impact on any of these topics? And so that's something that we can provide, you know, as much regional guidance as we can at this moment, but some of these topics might need to be revisited during more climate action planning at a later date, when we talk about actually how are these kinds of things going to be tracked and measured. And then, on goal number five, again, on production and spread of greenhouse gases, we received comments on how to be more active, perhaps, in the way the policies were written. And we'll be going back through here again to look at sort of how these relate back to the goal above on environmental resiliency. And then, on goal number six, which was added based on the CPAG comments to minimize waste and promote conservation of resources, we got support from the commission. This was a good goal to add. And we have, you know, received some comments as well on, it's a good goal, but maybe we can consolidate some of the policies to create more clarity. So that is my overall summary here of what we have heard. There's a lot more detail in here that I'm not specifically speaking to, but did we want to start off with, does a Planning Commissioner want to clarify any of their comments, or maybe provide any additional direction on comments left in the packet?
Does anybody else have any follow-up comments, clarifications?
Yeah, sorry, I forgot to add this. I know at the last meeting, Kristi said that a vision statement for each element was probably a good idea. Maybe that was the discussion of the housing policy. I forgot to submit any, and I don't know if anyone else did either, but is that something where you have any thoughts, or something we can see in the future?
Yeah, I do recall Kristi supporting that. So yeah, we would like to see that in the future, and maybe something we can discuss with the consultant team, or if you would like to provide some language?
Sure, I mean, I think, you know, we're sort of acknowledging that we're living in a, you know, a changing climate, and there's an environmental policy that's both to, you know, protect nature, but also an environmental policy where we're shaping the environment to protect people as well. And I think the biggest comment I have is kind of moving from a more passive language to a more active language, and like, kind of more clearly identifying like, steps the city can take. Or, you know, where it's not steps we take, being a bit more specific about how we interact with people. The lighting and noise was mostly because I was an acoustic consultant for 10 years, so I have thoughts on that. And I've also been observing, like, you know, there are like, noise pollution sources, I think, in town that like, we have some control over, like, for example, the emergency services are sort of in the middle of our densest place, and I'm hearing sirens, kind of driving up and down 58th over time. So like, are there some like, noise management strategies we should take into account for things like that? So that's an example of like, more active language, I think. And an example of where maybe it's more to protect people, but I think, you know, having a vision statement about like, why we're protecting the environment, and who it's for, and maybe a bit how we do it, and what benefit that brings to the community would be helpful.
And on a vision statement with that, would you like to see that in the introduction to an element, or?
I think, I think that's worthwhile.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Double check with our online commissioners? Not hearing or seeing anything, so I think we can move on.
So I ran through, sort of, as we've gone through Planning Commission comments, sort of the high-level takeaways, but are there, are there any additional comments or thoughts on things that you would like to pull our attention to as we move forward in revising these policies? Or anything that else that you might have felt was missing? Particularly those commissioners who did not submit a written comment?
Anybody want to highlight anything they may have submitted? Not hearing or seeing any? I know for me, I, you know, any thought that I had would have already been called out by CPAG or staff. So unlike the last two packets that we did, I didn't have much comment on either one, so I didn't, I didn't submit anything, but I see some commissioners made a lot of comments, but a lot of those kind of seem in agreement with, you know, previous comments as well, so. Unless anybody wants to circle back and focus on a comment in particular? Doesn't look like it, so.
So, so I guess I had something, this is Commissioner Morgan. Sorry, I don't know if you guys can hear me, I haven't called?
Yeah, go ahead.
Aside, my, my main, I guess, question, and this is...
Think we lost Commissioner Morgan?
Understanding motivation, because I know a lot of my questions are probably not going to be great for... ...into all of this.
Commissioner Morgan, you pretty much cut out for all of that, could you repeat that, please?
Is it possible to type it into the chat?
Yeah. Do we even have a chat?
I don't, I don't think there's a chat, are you guys, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great, sorry, I think I was between different wifi stations in my house. I guess my question is around, understanding as we address this and put work into this, what is worth our comments in terms of policy? And then, what is worth our effort in terms of action that we want to take in this process? Because there's a lot of questions that I have, that are probably around implementation of policy and things like that, but that might be dragging on some of our discussions beyond what, I guess, we're actually trying to accomplish here. And so, as we move forward, I don't want to continue making lots of comments that aren't necessarily meant to be addressed in this forum, and are maybe meant to be addressed in another forum. And so maybe some high-level understanding of that from the CPAG team would be great, to kind of help facilitate how to address some of these questions in the future.
Yeah, so I can take a first stab at perhaps giving some, an answer to that question. As we've received feedback, both from CPAG, as well as from Planning Commission, on the goals and the policies for the comprehensive plan, we've received a variety of comments on sort of all scales of detail here. We've received comment on policy language, on wording, wordsmithing, you know, active versus passive voice. It's always very helpful to understand sort of what is the correct word to use in the policy, whether it's encourage, or coordinate, or produce, or create. Those are all important words to sort of look at when we're writing policy, because that's all about the intention. How is this going to be read, what is the intention behind the policy? And there are certain best practices behind that, that we're looking into as we revise these, but we're also looking to, Commission, to provide any sort of feedback, if you have it, on sort of how some of these should be phrased. But as you ask about implementation, it is very helpful for us to receive the information, both from CPAG, so from Planning Commission, on where implementation items are most, we're most interested in seeing those. It is part of our work to put together a list of potential implementation items that would follow the comprehensive plan adoption. It's something that we're keeping a back list of as we go through this process, but it's very helpful to receive information on sort of what ideas are out there. We're not to the point in vetting those, reviewing those right now. We're collecting, and we'll come back at a later date to run through what makes sense to add as action items to implement some of these policies. Does that help?
If I can add to that also?
That does, I think that, I think that, that kind of addresses, I think where I'm looking for is like, I can, you know, as I read through the documents, it's like, there's a lot of different contexts... there's a lot of different contexts that I could apply in my questions and comments. And I guess I just want to be most effective and most efficient at like what I provide is something that is actually useful in this part of the process. So that I can kind of break down like my thinking into how I can be like provide the most impact rather than just giving like a broad stroke of like what I think and what I think may not actually, you know, all of those ideas may not actually be useful in the policy discussion, but might be more useful in other discussions. And I think better understanding like policy versus what actually gets put into code, because I, there might be a misunderstanding even in this process that what we are trying to define here is not necessarily code. This is just, as I understand it, recommendations for how we approach this entire process.
And if I can add, I, that is definitely what we want to be seeing from, from the planning commission as far as like level of comments. It's sort of guiding us and helping us figure out where we are in this process, what we've heard before. So what we've heard from CPAG, what we're hearing from planning commission, and then what gets presented to council is sort of that formulated policy statement that is based on input from CPAG and planning commission. So I think now is definitely the time to have comments like that.
So I've been, typically what I'll do is if there are code policy things that I think, or code things I think that should be implemented at some point, I'll put it in the comments and then I'll reword it. But if there's a, like a, you know, a wording change or I think there's a missing point entirely from the comp plan, I'll put it in there. Is that something that you're also thinking along the lines of or is that, are there like things that are like policy elements or code elements that you think should be added?
I think that's a question for Commissioner Morgan.
Yes, for Commissioner Morgan.
So, no, my question isn't related directly to what we're necessarily talking about. I guess mine was in general. Do we want to be addressing code, policy? How do we like, how can you help us understand how to best drill down our thinking as we analyze this information to be most effective? So I'm speaking for myself. I see code and policy being very different and kind of like different ways to address those topics and how I comment. And as we go forward, I guess I just better understand that. Like if I'm, if I'm giving you code recommendations, I feel like that's different than necessarily what our goals are from this current effort. If that makes sense.
Right.
We, we are looking for policy level recommendations at this point as we, as we write the, the draft goals and policies for the comprehensive plan.
And from what I can tell, the, you know, most of the comments that have, you know, were made, you know, kind of toe the line, you know, either way in some cases, sometimes it can kind of dip into code, sometimes it can kind of dip into policy. And it's just us sort of relying on staff and the consultants to decide which basket does that go into and how is it going to be addressed? So we can, we can just kind of make, we can make the comment and it's kind of up to you guys to figure out how to apply it.
Yes. And an environment is one of those where so much of the topics being covered by the policies here are things that are already implemented or already required by code or will be required by code. So it's something that we can clarify the distinction and the, sort of the thread between. So I can see how that could have been a sticking point as well on this policy review.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think you addressed kind of where I might have a little confusion, and that is on policy rolls down, so goals roll down to policy, policy rolls down to actual codes, codes roll down into implementation. And I think kind of like better understanding that helps me, at least in my mind frame, how I comment and how I go through this. Because again, I don't want to get hung up on code when if we're talking about goals that feed policy, which are like three steps ahead. I just, sorry, this is my like managerial brain kind of coming in here and like just understanding like how do I make sure that I am feeding the right information downstream? And, and I think that makes sense. Like having this discussion, like what we talked about here for five minutes helps me kind of understand that this is really kind of focused on goals, not necessarily code. But if there is code, some of that information you guys are going to retain and then when we get to that part of this process, it will be included.
And if, if this helps, our, our working definition of a policy reads, policies are a clear statement guiding a specific course of action for decision makers to achieve a goal. It's more of a, of a high-level action statement guiding city decision-making. And the action item or implementation pieces include the process of going through and writing and updating code language and development review language, but it can also include writing another plan. It could include many, many different items. And we are using feedback from this group to come up with ideas for what that could look like.
I love this slide. I love that dis, that description, and I think that's great. I think that might also help the CPAG group as well, like as we go through this, understanding, like trying to kind of contain where our thinking is rather than kind of getting way off where we might start thinking about specific instances, you know, kind of thinking more high level. I think that'll help everybody in this process. And so I think starting out some of these meetings actually with that as context might be a great way to like move forward and help us like really get down to the meat of what we're trying to accomplish today versus tomorrow.
Thank you for the, the recommendation there. You can provide that information as reference in the future.
I have a request. If something does wind up becoming more of a code statement as opposed to a policy statement, is that something you can provide a list of us, for us at the end of the process so we remember that we said it? To kind of keep track of it?
Yes, we can work. We are retaining a list of policies for, that aren't, that didn't quite make it into the full matrix, which I think you saw at the, at the bottom. Things will be deleted and we will keep a running list of all of our ideas and then the ones that will move forward as well as the ones that do not.
Thank you so much.
All right, one last time, anybody else? Not hearing or seeing anything, so I think we can move on to the next section.
All right, well, our next section is to talk through the discussion of the recreation parks and open space element policies. We've received written comment from three planning commissioners on this element. Under recreation parks and open space goal one, which reads to ensure that all parks and recreation facilities in Mount Lake Terrace are safe, clean, and green. Some nice rhyming there. We did receive quite a bit of comment, just, this is, a lot of this work here is, is feeding off of what's already been decided or already been, I would guess, planned as part of the recreation parks and open space master plan. So we've received comments here that, you know, everything looks good and will be continued to be updated and implemented as part of the recreation parks and open space master plan. On goal number two, which reads to provide a variety of recreation opportunities that support the health, welfare, and engagement of all community members, we did receive one higher level comment to just to address what does a variety of recreational opportunities mean? It might not, there might be new ideas out there from the last time recreation parks and open spaces kind of defined this. So we'll be going back and just maybe writing a call-out or information about what, what that variety of recreational opportunities means to expand that definition. So as we move through here, on goal number three, to promote connectivity between parks, recreation facilities, open spaces, schools, residential areas, employment centers, and key community destinations, and we've received policies here, or comments here on how to better align these policies with the transportation element policies. Multimodal transportation and pedestrian connections are a really big part of transportation, and they're also a really big part of parks and recreation and open space. So it's one of those places where we'll be ensuring that there is better clear linkages between what is being addressed in each, in each goal or each part of each element. All right, and then as we go to our goal number four, to use the recreation parks and open space system to provide opportunities for community connections, there are comments in here on maybe providing more innovative uses within parks and just support and some more active language on what we're doing to provide for community connection within parks, taking a more active approach maybe than a passive approach, which is something that we can bring back to the parks and rec, and open space staff at the city. And then our last one, number five, to utilize the designated passive park and open space system to protect environmental qualities and natural amenities within the city, we received support on the policies here and will be continuing to refine these as we refine the environment element to ensure that there is a consistency between how the, this goal and the environment element are portraying the city's use of green space. So with that high-level overview, I'd like to open it back up to planning commissioner comment from those, either those who did leave a written comment, if there's anything that I said that you would like to expand upon, if there's anything that I did not say that you would like to bring up for discussion here tonight, or if there is anything that we just want to generally pull attention to as part of our conversation on recreation parks and open space.
Does anybody have any follow-up comments or expanding on anything that you'd kind of put down on the matrix?
Sorry, I seem to have comments all the time. So I think, you know, this is a pretty full, this is a pretty well-baked, solid element of the comp plan. And I think that it's, you know, it came in pretty strong and it's very good. It's almost like we've got an entire committee dedicated to addressing it and the implementation of it. And I think, you know, if we, you know, are in the future considering other commissions or something, you know, like they would wind up creating something as, you know, thoroughly thought through and well-baked as this. So I would encourage that if we want to consider something like, you know, transportation or housing, maybe there's a board or commission that could be founded for that. And then because they're continually gathering information, like, and working through the implementation of this, it's something that I think would wind up making our job easier and also the comprehensive plan stronger over time. I do want to say, I think as far as vision statements go, you know, parks being sort of the, the heart of Mount Lake Terrace is something I remember hearing at CPAG. And I think that would be helpful to include in the vision statement. And then the things, I think the comments I had that were the big things we sort of are missing in relation to integration with other comprehensive plan elements are, as you mentioned, the transportation portion, integrating the parks with active transportation. And then the other thing that I think was amiss for us previously, that I don't know how we want to handle that, if it's in this or elsewhere, is how the edges of the parks interface with the city. So specifically, I'm thinking of Veterans Park where we have the development that's going in right now that is on the south side of Veterans Park that, you know, we had the opportunity to like create some standards, design standards and mechanisms to allow developers to like actually build a building that like opens onto the park or something. And we didn't have that in place in time. And so now there's just this eight-story wall that faces the park with windows in it, but like you can't go outside. It's not the end of the world in this case because it's, you know, the slopy part of the park, but the other half of that block, when it does develop, I do want to see that integrate with the parks a bit better. I also think there's opportunities for placemaking in terms of like making the design of the streets a little bit different where they're at the edge of the park. And then also helpful elements like, you know, basically, basically the edges of the park, how those go into the city. I think that's some like design standards we want to see at some point. I don't know what those are exactly, but I think, I don't know what y'all's thoughts are, but this is sort of my memory of like, kind of a shortcoming of how like the planning and parks elements don't quite interface, and I think they should interface a little bit more.
Anyone else? Double check with our online commissioners? Not hearing or seeing anything. Think I would just add, you know, the parks and rec part, definitely the, you know, the parks commission, you know, they deal with this a lot and they, you know, they've recently gone through their document. I think that's one of the reasons why it is, you know, as complete as it is right now. But, you know, there is definitely overlap between the open space part, because, you know, if the open space is in the right-of-way but isn't a park, it's more of a planning issue. So that's more in our, our, our realm. And I'd push back a little on your previous comment. I think housing and transportation are firmly in the planning commission's realm, and I think that is, you know, that's our responsibility to, you know, work on those and further flesh out those plans and policies. I don't, I don't think tasking that out to another group is necessary. I think that's, that's, that's what we're here for. But yeah, I will agree that, you know, a lot of the goals and policies are already in place. You know, the heavy lifting's already been done on this one, which is, is definitely a help.
Yeah, we had the benefit of having the, the RPOS plan, which is still current. And then we had our recreation parks director review policies as well. We did not present these yet to the RPAC, so that's definitely one of our goals is to meet with that body, to present these policies and get their, their feedback as well.
Yeah, I have a question based on your comment. So I do think, I agree with you, housing and transportation are kind of in our court, but I think where they sort of integrate with the parks commission is an area where things might fall through cracks, sort of like edge development standards of parks. Is that something that you think would be helpful to include in the, things like this and then delegate out? Should that be somewhere else? Like, I think it needs to be in the comprehensive plan somewhere, but...
Well, in, in terms of how, like, say, the edge of the park on the park side of the line, it's definitely in the parks groups purview. You know, they're the ones that are going to do, you know, probably do the heavy lifting and make the comments on that. In the past, we, you know, before anything goes to city council that comes out of our PAC, it comes to us as well. So we, we kind of have a cursor review and can make our comments as well. You know, when, when it is on sort of the city right-of-way side and sort, you know, and beyond, outside of the parks thing, then I think there definitely needs to be some sort of coordination in terms of that planning. You want those uses to be compatible, but, you know, it's, it, that would definitely, you know, fall within the, you know, the, the planning commission's purview. know, fall within the, you know, the Planning Commission's purview. But I think based off of previous comments, and I know comments that you've made on, in the past, especially with Veterans Memorial Park, that those linkages need to be clear and they need to be strong. So, you know, whatever, whatever process needs to be set up that maybe if we're missing, we need to do to capture that, then yes, I agree that that needs to work and there needs to be some, you know, coordination on that, on that level. I think part of the problem is, is that in the past, what we've had is we've addressed, like, say, the town center, but that was sort of a separate process than Veterans Memorial Park. And we have two issues that relate, but yet weren't being dealt with at the same time. So maybe, you know, moving forward, if we run into that in like our other subareas or sort of commercial centers where, you know, there might be a parks adjacent to it, which, off the top of my head, I don't think there are any in the way that Veterans Memorial Park does, then yeah, there would probably need to be, you know, some coordination or at least, or at least planning, like if the city knows that, hey, we're going to be dealing with this subarea or this commercial center, and there is a parks directly adjacent to it, maybe take that opportunity to look at that park as well and see if things need to be updated or not. But again, sometimes things get budgeted and there's resources for one, but not both. Ideally, we could handle both at the same time, but you know, it's a...
Yeah, I feel like that's almost like a meta-comment, like we've got these silos and everyone's kind of looking at their different parts and we need to build bridges between the silos somehow. Like, I feel like that needs to be in the comprehensive plan somehow, like identifying these things where like there are different groups and elements that are there. And like we need a statement that, okay, those groups should work together. And I don't know how that winds up being policy. Maybe there's a list or something, maybe is like big part of the planning process, like we make sure that, like, you know, we're talking to our PAC and the transport, you know, if there is other groups, DEI shall obviously be in everything. But I think sort of reducing silos is probably the catchphrase I'd use. I don't know where that fits in the policy, though.
It's up to staff and consultants to figure out, but I'm sure, you know, as, as we, you know, are looking at citywide and focusing on the subareas, you know, if, if there is somewhere where there might be an opportunity to, what decisions and ideas are being tossed around for updates to the plan, you know, that's sort of in the Planning Commission purview, if there seems to be a direct effect to an adjacent park, then hopefully we can have some sort of coordination in updates if, if, if they're needed and warranted. Just one last time, anyone else want to expand on any comments you may have made or want to add some comments that are new? I am not hearing or seeing anything, going once, going twice. Okay, I think we can move on.
All right, so our next set of element policies to review is the economic vitality element. So I believe Shannon will be distributing the paper copies of the policy matrix, and then you'll receive an email with the electronic version. So for this one, oh, did you want to talk through this?
Yes, so for this policy matrix, should be feeling maybe a little familiar by this point. You'll notice that the one in front of you has a slightly different header than the one that you're looking at on the screen. That's due to formatting changes from the time the PAC was finalized till now. But you'll notice the existing economic vitality policies, sort of how those have been consolidated, how those are meeting regional requirements, and then how those are turning into new policy statements. And then you'll see again where we're getting feedback from CPAG, where they had questions that we can address either in call-outs or in policy refinements, and where we received support on the approach to these policies from CPAG. There's some additional comments, just a running commentary of where we know additional coordination will be happening to revise these policies. And then lastly, that column for your questions and comments for Planning Commission.
And so we're asking that you submit comments by April 15th at 4:00 PM via email to Shannon Olson, solson@mltwa.gov. And again, if you can use track changes for any comments or edits in Word. If you're handwriting comments, please just scan it in and send it by email. And then this will be brought up for discussion at the April 22nd Planning Commission meeting, so our next meeting. Any questions there?
I have a comment. So I just flipped through the comments in the matrix from CPAG, and I would encourage you to read them. I thought this is an interesting discussion that they had, particularly in terms of ensuring economic vitality, other than just kind of having basic services, but also a bit about, you know, how we provide basic services as well in town. And so I think that was an interesting point of discussion, so I suggest looking at that.
So now we're going to get into review and discuss the draft growth alternative allocations. I have Mandy Roberts presenting to this section, but just wanted to preface that, as you recall, staff presented our draft alternatives to CPAG, Planning Commission, and Council, and Council supported the version of the three alternatives that, that you recommended. Our consultant team put the numbers together, and so we have those preliminary draft findings, and I'll have Mandy sort of talk through those.
Thanks, Jonathan. Also, just if any commissioners want to have an NCAA score update, I just refreshed my phone, and it's, we've got about, let's see, about nine minutes left in the second half, 56 Yukon, 42 Purdue. So just want to let you guys know. All right. So back to the presentation at hand. We have done a detailed look at the two action alternatives, which were the two growth alternatives that we previously presented to you and talked about with both CPAG and Planning Commission. And if you'll remember right, we had a no-action alternative, which was basically what if we didn't make any zoning changes? And we determined, you know, early at that stage, that we would not be able to meet the 2044 housing target allocation with that. So we were looking at two additional action alternatives. And this is a bitter, bit of an iterative process, basically. So we conceptualized some rezoning ideas with, with you and the CPAG, and we looked at parcel configurations related to those. And then we went away and we did some calculations related to each of these, and we estimated what the capacity would be to be added with each of these through upzoning. And so we will go to the next slide. And what we found is that basically with, with upzoning under Alternative 2, we would be able to increase housing capacity so that we would have over 8,000 housing units above our target by 2044. And with Alternative 3, which, which was a bit of a gasp, I have to say, we learned that we would have over 25,000 housing units above our capacity, or above our target, excuse me. And so with jobs, not as extensive, but we would have more than 3,000 jobs, 3,212 jobs, under Alternative 2, above our target. And under Alternative 3, we would have 4,087 jobs. And so we, as a team, kind of did a litmus test, look at this, and decided that Alternative 3 turned out to be very aggressive. And the level of growth that we would experience under Alternative 3 felt like it would be very difficult for the city to manage in terms of being able to provide, you know, a sustainable level of infrastructure improvements and capital investments over the next 20 years to really support that. It's just so far beyond what we need to have to meet our target. And so we know that, that the Planning Commission and City Council and the CPAG really want to be aggressive in terms of supporting growth and supporting a variety of housing options. We understand that, but we felt that Alternative 3 is, is really going above and beyond now that we've had the opportunity to really calculate that out and look at it. So, so with that, I don't know what the next slide is, Jonathan, if you want to go to that.
Yeah, I see Commissioner Morgan has his hands raised.
Oh, yes, yes, please. I'll pause.
Yeah, no, I, this is, I have a timely input, and that is, I was reading over the city of Edmonds, some of their information they put out. And so back in 2015, they did their comp plan, and I'm not reading directly off of their information right now. But back in 2015, based on their comp plan, where they're at, where they plan to be today and where they're at today is off by quite a bit. And I, I feel like, you know, helping us understand that, like, hey, that, this is the planned numbers and planned, you know, where, where these could end up. There's also probably a mean of where all the cities end up actually landing.
Yeah.
At scale. And so I'd be really curious to see that because I think that would be really good to help us understand the difference between two and three. Because I completely agree, number three is, like, there's so many other considerations to take in to accommodate that. But then, you know, eight's not meeting it, so where, you know, what is reasonable to think about?
Yeah. Well, yes, thank you so much, Commissioner Morgan. And Edmonds maybe is a different community than Mount Lake Terrace because they have really, they really haven't needed to provide the target for growth that you all are allocated. But, you know, with that said, I think Alternative 2 is really going above and beyond over the next 20 years, meeting the target that you've been allocated. It would give you more than 8,804 units more than what you've been allocated as far as meeting the capacity for. So what we decided to do, and let me know, Jonathan, if others have their hands up because I can't really see everyone, but what we've decided to do is to recommend that we go with Alternative 2 as the high end of the alternatives, and that we introduce a new alternative that's between the no-action and Alternative 2. And remember that our alternatives are for further study in the EIS. So none of these things are actually proposed for implementation yet until we go through the EIS process. But what we've, what we would like to recommend is looking at a new alternative that's really midway between no-action and Alternative 2, that would put you, you know, around 4,000 units above capacity, which would still be quite aggressive in terms of, you know, providing more capacity than you are projected to need for your growth. But it would not be to the extent of not being able to support infrastructure improvements and capital investment to support your growth. And that's what we're, we're really worried about, is we don't want to put the city in a situation where you, you know, even in study, that you're having to go above and beyond in infrastructure improvements to support a growth level that's just not likely to happen in the next 20 years. So, so with that, I'm going to pause and, and just see if there are some other questions or comments on this.
Yeah, and Mandy, I do have a slide that shows the breakdown by income level, if I can present that real quick.
Great, thank you so much.
So yeah, with those assumptions on the three alternatives, by income level, so we have the groupings between 0 to 80% of area median income, and then 80 to 120, and then 120% and up. So with the no-action scenario, we would see a surplus of 1,587 units at the 0 to 80% AMI level, a deficit of about 924 units at the 80 to 120. And then as we presented previously, we're showing the deficits at the 120 and up income level. We're not required to plan for those. What we're required to plan for is 0 to 8, 0 to 120%. With Alternative 2, it's a capacity surplus of about 9,000 at the 0 to 80% level and 1,595 at 80 to 120. Then Alternative 3 is the 26,579 at 0 to 80%, 945 at 80 to 120. And then by, we also have population numbers, what this all means for population growth. So our target for 2044 is 34,710. With the three scenarios, we're showing a estimated capacity of 30,882 with the no-action, 51,207 with Alternative 2, and 85,868 with Alternative 3. That represents an addition of 51,158 people.
Thanks, Jonathan. And I would just say, you know, so why did we even go through the process of looking at Alternative 3? It always helps us to first go, go through a conceptual and geographic understanding of where we think growth should happen. And, you know, until we actually calculate that out and understand what that means, you know, it's difficult to know if that's on par or not. And I would just say that it wasn't an exercise of futility because, you know, what we learned is that this is a, a growth pattern that the community would really benefit from in the long-term future. And so we've really documented that as part of our process, and maybe it's our 50-year growth plan, right? And we can, the next time the city updates their conference of plan, we can dust this off and take another look at it as far as the Alternative 3. But, but again, and just based on the additional numbers that Jonathan just showed you, we feel like Alternative 3 is just going way too far, and we need to look at something in between the no-action and Alternative 2 for our study. So again, I will be quiet and see if we have comments or questions about this.
Commissioner Morgan, I see your hand is still up. I just want, did you still have a question or a comment?
No, I just, I just wanted to say thank you, Mandy. That was a very good explanation of that and helped me better understand where we stand. And I guess what I would, what I'm taking away and what I'd present to probably everybody on the call is that, like, I guess there's the opportunity to look at, is there something we can provide to the wider community? Because clearly, we're going to meet our targets without having to work as hard as maybe other communities might in Sohomish County? And like, is there something that we can provide without having to give too much on our end that might help the overall, like GMA and everything? Because it seems like we're, we're doing pretty good, and there's not a whole lot we have to do, which is great. But then that makes me think, like, how can we, yeah, look outside of just our, our bounds?
That's a really good point. I might just say that, you know, the way that the county allocates growth, it's, it is by municipality, by city. And so it's a little bit, it's a difficult task to say, oh, we're going to take on some of our neighbors' growth allocations. But I would say that you guys are doing a great job, and you do have a light rail station there, which, you know, is one of the key things in the regional growth plan to maximize housing and jobs and proximity to light rail. And so I think you're really doing your best, and your, your community is really supportive of diverse housing types. And so we've learned that through this process, and I think we're on the right track. We just don't want to go overboard is where we are tonight. So, thank you.
Does anybody else have any? Does anybody else have any? Comments, questions?
Frankly, I think those other communities need to step up a bit more. Like, you know, I think, you know, of all the communities in our GMA, I believe we have been asked to change the most. When these growth allocation targets are assigned, I think we had 21,000 people. Assigned to, we had 37,000 or 38,000. Could you go back a slide to the population numbers?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah. So, you know, we had 34,000 people assigned to a 21,000 person committee. Like if Seattle grew like us, they'd have like well over a million people in 2024. 2044, right? Like, I think. The best thing we can do is to show that this growth is desirable and also like. They should be growing like us rather than us absorbing their extra capacity. Because I think ultimately the way we're growing is going to be beneficial and desirable and frankly, more sustainable. Than the way that other communities are growing in our region. I once did some back of the envelope math. About like, you know, a good litmus test of walkability, right? Is like, can you walk to a grocery store? And if you want everyone within a 10 minute walk to the grocery store. Within that half mile radius, you sort of need about. 12,000 people per square mile, 13,000 or something. And that works out to about 50,000 or what are we terracites, pterodactyls? I like the term pterodactyls, but no one ever calls us that. So when I see these growth projections and I see alternative to about 51,000, like that's kind of the, the baseline of where walkability is. It's also way over our growth target. And then I see, you know, 86,000 pterodactyls. I mean, when I got this in the email. I did the math and I'd used our current, you know, like household size and I got closer to like 100,000 pterodactyls. And I'm like, okay, we need to go to like community transit and ask for some more board seats because we're clearly going to be a lot more. Important in the county, I think, than we currently are where it's just sort of like, you know, we're kind of a mid sized suburb. Like this is growing us into a bit of a larger suburb. But, you know. I don't think super. Large, like I don't think this is like, if we go back, could we go back to the? The maps? Like, I think. Alternative two is really not all that big of a change. Like we basically taken our multifamily and commercial zones and updated the zoning. And then we've added some limited areas of missing middle housing. So like, I don't think that actually is like a huge and massive change. Beyond sort of what we have already, except that. You know, we'll probably wind up having some more. Fourplexes or little townhouses or something. Which we've kind of already known. So I think. Alternative two and something between alternative one and two sounds reasonable. We'll see what the EIS statement says for like transportation impacts and things like that. Could we go to the income? Element? Cool. So if I remember right, we're talking, our, our assumption is that people over 100 to 20% AMI are living in. Exclusively low density SFRs, but I thought we were also talking about certain missing middle housing types that could be targeted toward 120% AMI. Like cottage housing and things like that. Are you able to talk a little bit more about like how those maps trap translate into these numbers?
Yes. So I want to be very clear that the, the zone category serving these needs column in this table is very specific guidance. That is being required by Commerce in order to meet the letter of how this analysis is being. How this methodology is being translated to every jurisdiction in Washington. So it's a bit of a. Thank you. It doesn't apply, I guess, you wouldn't, you wouldn't see it applied. I guess you're trying to apply something to everyone at the same time. There is, let's see, we have some numbers here. So. The low density, single family residential that you're seeing here with negative numbers is. All that is doing is it's showing that the more current single family residential lots that are. Turned, that are zoned for a transitional or zoned for a different type of zoning. That takes away for the capacity for single family homes. In a community though. In reality, when it comes to a community like Mountain Lake Terrace where there is not going to be just endless growth for single family residential homes. Because we really are at the max of developable, developable property here. What you'll find is either the turnover of existing single family homes into nicer ones. Or the subdivision into duplexes or fourplexes or cottage housing. And that moderate density middle housing, you know, 80 to 100 AMI lined there. That feeds into also the capacity for higher income housing. That's one of the reasons why we're not required to plan for that higher income housing. That is market driven housing and there is a part of the analysis is to just say that that will happen as a market driven. Factor. It's those lower income brackets where the, the need to support those housing comes from higher density multifamily housing. Where there needs to be city action to ensure that there is enough capacity for that type of development. And so we do have. There isn't, there is an assumption that that moderate density middle housing section is. Fed into by all of the transitional zoning that you see on those maps. And then the purples and the dark purples that are the, the higher multifamily density, that is what's feeding into the. Lower income, zero to 30, you know, 30 to, to 80% AMI. It's also one of the reasons why you see it go down between alt two and alt three. There is a lower amount of capacity for that moderate density and middle density housing in alternative three. That is because more of the potential land for rezoning has been allocated towards those higher density uses. That fall into that. Sort of racket for. More affordable housing.
Okay. So the dark blue on the map then is going into the sort of below 80% and then the lighter blue is going into 80 to 120%.
Yeah.
Okay. Cause I think going forward, as we look at these, like one of the questions I have is like, how much are we trying to expand affordability in what range? And what kind of housing does that look like? And what are we trying to preserve? Like where should we target each of these things? And what I'm hearing, what I've heard in the past and kind of throughout this process is. You know, other communities like saying Macalteo might need to try and expand some of their more deeply affordable housing, like the areas where that can happen. And, you know, we'll be looking at as well, but we also like, you know, our resources is about expanding or all resources also about preserving what we have. And making sure that people who are already in those ranges aren't displaced. And I guess that's one facet in land use, but then the other facet is like, how are we expanding, you know, affordability sort of. Beyond the 120, like below the 120% AMI. So. When I look at this chart, what it's telling me is that. We seem to need more of the moderate density middle housing. And we also, you know, we should clearly modernize our zoning codes so that we have enough, you know, of the sub 80% AMI housing. But maybe that is something that we're able to do a little bit. Like, you know, we're sort of already doing it, would you say? And. The probably next step we have is sort of expanding this like 80 to 120% AMI workforce housing. Is that kind of what this table is saying? Or I don't, I don't know, maybe there's other people have different interpretations, but.
I, I would just weigh in to say that as we look at this alternative. That is between. No action, alternative one and alternative two. That I would really like it to continue to meet. Our. Required need for the 80 to 120%. So at, at alternative two levels, see, you can see we have a 1,595. Unit surplus. If we go, if we go backwards from that, we don't, we don't want to go below. Our, our, you know, we don't want to go into a deficit mode. So we would really look at how we're, how our rezoning scheme can continue to support that. If that, if that's kind of what you're getting at Commissioner.
I think so. I think.
Want to continue to provide that. Yeah.
Yeah, I think my, like, the sense when I first was, you know, shown this is that like, oh, we, you know, the, the analysis you've done. Shows that, okay, we've actually got quite a bit of capacity of apartments, but we need more middle housing. And this analysis you presented basically says we need more middle housing, I guess is the summary here. Okay. And then I had one other question. Could we go back a slide to the jobs? Where do those jobs go?
This one?
Yeah, we have housing and jobs. Where do the jobs, we have different levels of jobs, but our zoning seems to be mostly through housing. Or mostly focused on housing. Where do those jobs go?
I think we have some job increases anticipated in the Melody Hill area. And then along some of the corridors and then as part of mixed use. Redevelopment in several of the sectors that we're looking at. So.
Okay, I think.
Sierra, you might want to speak to this a little bit more, but that's, that's my anticipation.
Yeah. And it, and it hasn't generally been a focus of the conversations because even in the no action, when you look at just the capacity for employment. In areas of the city that are already allow for more office and, you know, light industrial uses. As well as current, you know, retail areas, the city's already meeting. The capacity for the number of jobs that it's been allocated. And you'll see that there are pretty moderate increases between the no action alt two and alt three. It's a much. You know, it's not the drastic change that you're seeing in alt two and three for housing. And that's because. Those future jobs really are, as Mandy said, the kind of mixed use development going in, which has retail, also work from home jobs. There's a certain allocation based on, you know, the industry here in the city as well as the population. Percent of those are for work from home and then other employment that would come along with the housing increase.
Okay. I know one of the CPAC comments was about getting higher paid jobs into town. Is that something you're able to break out a little bit in this with the assumption is with retail jobs versus like industrial jobs versus work from home jobs? Like, are you able to kind of make a similar chart for jobs as you are to the housing types?
I believe that we do have a breakdown at a really high level, looking more. It's something that we can, we can bring back to the team to see what we can come back with. I'm not sure if, I don't have that off the top of my head here. But we are not sort of required to do that breakdown like we are for housing, for housing at income level.
Okay, I know that I think, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Mandy, do you have anything to add there?
Well, I was just going to add, yes, I completely agree with what Sierra just said. That we've made some assumptions about what we think the job sectors would be. But again, you know, we're not able to really control the market and the people that will come in and bring jobs. We can. We can make some recommendations through policy and strategies that might help us. Bring more living wage, family wage jobs to the community. But, you know, it's a very difficult thing to. Absolutely control, as you might guess, but we do have some estimates or assumptions we can bring back to the commission.
Okay, I think that would help address the CPAC comment because I think that might be something they like to see and, you know, I, I would actually be interested to see. The other two things I'd like to see are. The, if on the next slide you have the sort of housing breakdown over the whole city, if we could do that by sub area. Cause I think that would sort of like, I don't know if it's going to wind up in the, you know, the comp plan sort of. You know, economic integration, but sort of like, you know, what level of new housing and of what category each type we're sort of expecting in the neighborhood. It's like, you know, this is probably the, the closest proxy we have to see that. And then in the. Sort of the jobs, I think there's a potential conflict between jobs and housing that I've seen elsewhere in the region. Where the strip mall gets demolished and then it's built as an apartment building with no retail. And I think that's a complaint a lot of people are having around here. And I think, you know, ultimately we're going to wind up having to have a policy that. You know, I think the most hamfisted way to go about it, that I'd like to see something a little bit more artful is like, you cannot remove any retail capacity in any development. I personally don't like that option, but I think it's probably like, you know, the most direct way of like. Preserving, you know, services in town. But if anyone has better ideas about that, I think that's something we'll wind up looking into at some point because I do think like there, like when we're making mixed use, there is this conflict between the retail. And the housing. And the retail tends to lose and it makes our walk score go down basically. So I think. Identifying that will help us target areas that we can then make solutions about.
I think one of the things that a lot of communities. Have struggled with is they really want this active ground floor. In their mixed use zones and. The traditional. Zoning was to make that all retail. And so zoning codes have been a little bit too restrictive over time over what that ground floor. Use can be. And so people are expanding that to be more flexible. Especially over, over time, over the life of a mixed use project. So. Some communities are saying, well, that can be live space. You know, initially, you know, maybe those are. At grade living units, it could be active uses, offices. Exercise studios, things like that. It doesn't have to be just retail or just restaurant. Because the idea is just to have people at the ground floor level moving in and out and creating that activated. Street frontage. And so. You'll see that in some places where it's not flexible like that, that. People have trouble renting that ground floor space to different uses. So I, I think. Mountain Lake Terrace has some flexibility there and we, we probably want to just make sure that we're being as flexible as possible as we go forward.
Yeah. And I think one thing that will help us with that in this analysis phase is identifying, identifying the conflicts of where these things are at risk. So if we have like a, a jobs attached to it or a square footage of retail. And I don't know, I was in. Planning school a million years ago. And so I took a GIS class in Florida and they do this like, like conflict analysis thing through GIS where. They basically weighted all the different categories of use in the state and basically the entire state turned red with development based on their analysis. And like, it's actually kind of worked out. So I don't know what kind of analyses you're able to do, but for something a little bit more granular like this, but like. Identifying. Conflicts between two competing things, I think would be helpful for us to understand. Like what are the chances of losing housing or losing retail? Or, you know, are there like properties that are likely to go, more likely to go than others? I think that'll help us like work through kind of the size of the problem we have. And then that'll help us understand like flexibility and where it might be easier to understand. You know, where it is not profitable, for example, to build the ground floor retail and where it might be easier to require it. Or maybe there are some incentives we can provide, like something other than just saying you cannot remove any retail. That's sort of where I'd like us to get. And I think that might be kind of, I don't know if you have any other thoughts of kinds of analysis that can be done, but I think understanding that conflict is something that we need to understand.
I think it's trying to find the balance. And so I, yeah, we'll look into. Look into that and some precedents that we can bring to the table. Yeah.
Just wanted to add, we, just so you know, we are also concurrently doing the economic development strategic plan. Process with Leland Consulting Group. So that's looking more at our economic development sectors and. process with Leland Consulting Group. So that's looking more at our economic development sectors and over a five-year period. So that's some work that's currently ongoing. This is looking at more of a 20-year vision. So I think we can take your comments and think more about that, for sure.
Great, thanks. And I think those are all my comments. So thanks for bearing with me.
I did want to add just to your, your question about getting sort of a map or seeing where all these numbers are, are located within the city. In the, in the slide deck here, we have those two sort of like future land use alternative maps. And that's going to be sort of as, as close as we're going to get as this process right now on where that growth is going spatially within the city.
Okay, cool.
Does anybody else have any questions, comments? Not hearing or seeing any for in person. Let me just double check with our online commissioners. Because I've got comments, but I want to give everybody else a chance to speak first.
No, so I think I had a comment before all of this. And no, again, like, thanks for all that. I just wanted to set the context that I am not looking to expand us, you know, beyond what we're already committed to. I love it. I just, I, I do want us to hope to think about our, our whole community and neighboring communities and not look at them as necessarily what, who's holding up the most and whether we should more or less than others. But that we're clearly doing well. And as we move forward, I think seeing how some of these numbers can be applied to maybe other areas like the economy or economics that might improve some of the job numbers that we're concerned about, things like that, where we can adapt some of these numbers in a way to just benefit us, benefit us overall. So I don't think that quite completed everything, but it was kind of just based on the population. I don't want to expand us more than we are, just for context. I just hope to see that we are doing great and how can we also benefit our neighbors while we're doing that, both housing, economic, recreation and open spaces, and climate, you know? And also where can we then think about, how can we leverage that to make ourselves maybe like a leader in some of these areas and make other cities look towards us? So anyways, I'll end with that.
Anyone else? Not hearing or seeing anything. Okay, so I got a couple of questions and or comments. So. It was nice to hear that, you know, council, you know, was kind of in line with Planning Commission with Alternative 3. I know it seems like, you know, a lot considering where we're coming from. I'm a little discouraged to hear that, you know, the analysis says that it might be a little bit too much for the city to take on, especially with keeping up in terms of infrastructure. But rather than have Alternative 2 sort of become the high end and find a middle ground between no action and Alternative 2, would it be possible to either make that a new Alternative 3 that's somewhere in between 2 and 3? Or, I don't want to have us make like five different alternatives, but, you know, something that's below 2, if you want to really go below 2, but something that's above 2, but not as high as 3. One of the reasons I, I ask this is because decades of experience dealing with what the city projects and what actually happens, you know, is enough to pull your hair out. It never goes the way you think. When you think you're not going to get as much, you get more. And when you think you're going to get too much, you don't get any. And then you're sitting there for 10 years wondering, wow, if we'd only done this, maybe that would have helped kind of goose the numbers. And, you know, some of that is because we're beholden to national economic trends and we don't really have control over that sometimes. But I think when it gets to things like, even Commissioner Breschers mentioned it before, you know, sustainability, density, what's going to feed the housing that is going to be more affordable and it's going to be the more dense housing? Most likely, the, you know, the, you know, the multi-story apartments, you know, we all want, you know, the, you know, sort of what everyone terms sort of the missing middle. But unfortunately, that missing middle is usually what gets, end up being built as market rate as well. So while it's, it's, it's satisfying a missing portion for one component, it is definitely leaving people behind in another component. And I'd kind of like to see the breakdown in terms of, you know, if there was a monetary amount that was calculated that, oh, it's going to cost the city this much in terms of infrastructure. Is that just sort of a across-the-board look? Or is that sort of hyper-focused if we were to keep sort of these Alternative 3 density goals, but just really focused on kind of surrounding our commercial nodes and kind of these places that we're, you know, really trying to focus on making more sort of urban placemaking? If it's just focused in there, I'm assuming the, the infrastructure costs would be lessened and also alleviated in part by I'm sure the development fees that we could collect for, you know, to allow this type of growth to come in in the first place versus thinking of the, the infrastructure cost, cost citywide where we're, one, probably maybe not going to get that kind of development and two, it really wouldn't kind of serve our goals and purposes to see the development as spread out as opposed to it being focused, you know, kind of in our core of the sub areas, you know, what, what we've kind of identified, you know, on the maps. I'm sure I'm rambling a little bit, but I'm just, part of it's a little bit of frustration and maybe seeing, seeing if there's, oh, a, a different alternative or a different way of looking about it. You know, can, can, can we circle the square? Or, you know, is, is there still an option out there? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Jonathan, could you go back to the one that shows the housing unit breakdown by income level? Yeah, there you go. So first of all, Commissioner, what I would like to say is we are on a path to update your comprehensive plan in five years rather than eight to 10. There'll be a five-year update due to, you know, some of the legislation that's going on and the need to have a climate element. And so I think we're in a situation now where growth is happening so fast across our region and in the state, and changes are happening so fast that we, you know, the city will need to take another look at your comprehensive plan in five years. And that will be a great opportunity to really monitor where growth has evolved or changed from this, from this year to 2029, if you will. And, you know, to maybe then reset if needed with zoning. But on the other hand, we just don't want you to, to plan for a trajectory over the next 20 years that's just way out of alignment with what a typical, even a, a very aggressive percent per year growth would be. And that's kind of when we crunch the numbers on 3, and I apologize because it is a little bit frustrating because we're all excited. We want to look at, you know, this aggressive growth plan. But when we crunch the numbers, we're just like, wow, that really added up to a lot more than, than we anticipated. And we wanted, we even applied market factor to that. We looked at different building types. And, you know, we didn't assume all one level of density and all of that. But even with that, it was super high. And so we just feel that it's just really way out of sync with, with what it should be, even as, as a high aggressive alternative to look at that. So that's really what we're saying is that Alternative 2 really represents more of an aggressive now, aggressive scenario with a higher percentage per year growth rate. And it will enable you to still be really responsible in how you're growing. And also, as we talked about a minute ago, to expand the 0 to 80% capacity, which is really quite an expansion there. So, you know, basically 907,000 surplus over the capacity of 10,994. So it's a really good spot to be in. And it also gives you the opportunity to expand that 50, excuse me, that 80 to 120% types of housing that we were just talking about, the different middle housing and cottage housing types quite a bit. Whereas if we keep growing into Alternative 3, it does put some of that 80 to 120 at a little bit of a disadvantage. You know, we're not able to quite fit as much because we're growing so fast and we're adding in a lot more apartment buildings and things like that. So, so I would just suggest that we, that we look at Alternative 2 as the high end. We find a mid-level growth target to analyze. And then in five years, you take a look at this and you say, is this, is this on par? Should we be growing faster? And at that point, you can make some adjustments to, you know, to a higher level if needed. But I just really feel that Alternative 3 is just really, now that we've crunched the numbers on it, it's just really too, too much, too soon, too much infrastructure. And, and the way that we anticipate that is, I, I totally agree with what you're saying, that infrastructure is going to be less than if it's spread out in an urban sprawl kind of way because we are looking at clustering it in centers and with smart growth techniques that we've all talked about. But just the pure extent of growth is going to put a lot of pressure on all of your systems, not just utilities and traffic and transportation, but also on city infrastructure, public services, schools, library, things like that. And so it just seems way too big. So, so that's my input. Sorry if I'm going, I am kind of rambling now, so I apologize for that. But just wanted to make those points.
So rather than, you know, us keeping Alternative 3 in its complete configuration as of right now, can we at least have the opportunity to sort of break down the different areas, sub areas of Alternative 3 and say, okay, we're not going to do Alternative 3 across the board, but we like the element in this location. And we want, we want to now move that, we want to keep that. So no matter what we do moving forward, we want to make sure that way. And I'm not, I'm not saying this in any particular bias or order. I'm just pointing things out. You know, we've, we've talked about, you know, what's happening, you know, at 212th and 44th. You know, what's happening at 228th and 44th, the town center. You know, we've already spent all this money or, or in the process of spending all this money on infrastructure in the town center. It would make sense to still target growth there or, you know, in the core commercial part of Melody Hill, you know? So we're not looking at the city as a whole or just abandoning Alternative 3 altogether. But I think there are higher density concepts in Alternative 3 that aren't necessarily in Alternative 2 right now that maybe not carry it all over, but maybe cherry picking. You know, like you said, we're going to have another couple of years to take another crack at this. I recognize that. But I also recognize when we don't have the, the great, I don't want to say the right zoning on the books, but the, the zoning that allows a type of development on the books, now we run the risk of the property aggregation not to start or something to be redeveloped that, that really kind of goes against what any of us had intended to, for. And now we're stuck with it. And I'll give a good example. I don't know if this is still happening. Staff might not be able to say. But we talk about, you know, 212th and 44th. At 214th and 44th, there's a big commercial lot right there that has been on the market for a while now. Clearly ripe for some sort of mixed use, multi-story development if we could have gotten the zoning on the books on the, at time. But an application came in for a car wash. That is now grandfathered in. So even if we change the zoning, if they, if they decide to move forward with that project, we're stuck with that. And so I just don't want to see that happen in these other prime locations in the city where because we think, oh, we're good and we'll just look at it in another couple of years, another couple of years run down the line and we get another car wash. Or we get something else that is completely incompatible with what our vision for that area is. Now, I'd say that as an example. I don't even know if that car wash is still happening. That for sale sign is still up. Maybe that fell through. I don't know. Yes, go.
I have a request.
Yeah.
Can you describe what you just said in changes to the color blobs on the maps?
Oh, you're asking the person who's colorblind and has a hard time seeing small print.
Okay, can we also, can we also get colorblind favorable maps? I do think that is an accessibility issue, by the way.
I feel that way too. And I actually been biting my tongue wanting to say that for.
Yeah, okay, no, I think this is, this is really important. So like my comment, I think, is, you know, if I were to summarize it in color blobs on the map, it's we're looking more closely at the light blue and maybe the light purple light changes a little bit, right? What you're saying sounds like, are you, are you like trying to find more of these places? Like some of the blobs need to be located? Are you looking at the color of the blobs or the intensity?
Yeah, intensity, you know, basically, you know, saying, okay, we can't keep all of Alternative 3. But there are parts of Alternative 3 in some areas that don't necessarily exist on Alternative 2. Let's import that over. Let's not throw out the baby with the bathwater altogether, you know, only half a baby.
Yeah, so, so it's like what, what you're saying, I think what I, what I'm seeing Alternative 3 is like, we've got, you know, more intense corridors and things like that. And then sort of wider blue blob. And what you're asking for is more of like the, the intensity at the, the corridors in that case. So you're Alternative 2A versus Alternative 1A.
Yeah. And, and part of the problem is, is it's, it's hard, it's, it's easy to make a, I don't want to say a snap decision or, or comment just based off of historical knowledge, you know? I would like to be able to see some, you know, some numbers to sort of, you know, back up that decision. You know, we, we've had these policies, policy discussions for years. And so we kind of know what we want. But it, it'd be helpful to see some, some of the research that you guys have done, you know, and, you know, kind of parse those numbers down a little bit more, just, just so we have a little bit more to go off of. So we can make that informed decision saying, okay, yeah, we, we still want to keep this, this intersection node or that intersection node or in, you know, in the case of the town center, you know, the, you know, sort of the expansion of two more additional blocks to the east or to the north or whatever. I think it would really help us if we, if we, if we had a little bit more detail on those numbers. I, I don't know if they exist and they just need to be sort of formatted for us that we can digest. Or if it'd be, if it doesn't exist at that level and it can't be provided, I don't.
Yeah. The, the purpose of the EIS is really to take these alternatives through that next level of analysis to really understand what the outcomes would be and what the impacts would be related to traffic and transportation and utilities and infrastructure. So we haven't, we haven't done that yet to that level of detail. And we're trying to get there soon to stay on course with our schedule. And so I completely understand what you're saying. And in fact, when we were talking about creating an alternative between Alternative 1 and Alternative 2, we were talking about holding true to some of the framework goals that we had all talked about. You know, for example, concentrating growth in the town center area, concentrating growth around the light rail station, around key corridors and holding true to that. But not to the level that's shown in Alternative 3 because it's just really such a level that we just don't think we would see growth to that level in the next 20 years. So we don't, we don't want to spend a lot of time analyzing and doing traffic modeling for something that's just not likely to happen. And I, I get what you're saying about, you know, well, it could happen and, and it, and it could, but I think it would be very unlikely, very unusual that we would see growth to this level in the next 20 years, maybe 50 years. So we just don't want to spend the city's money doing a lot of analysis that's just not likely to occur, if you know what I mean. And, and we do need to get going on that analysis. So we do want to try to, try to get a sense of the commissioner's support for looking at a, a third alternative that's either, what I'm hearing now is that maybe we need to look at a 2A that's slightly bigger than 2. Whereas we were going to recommend, you know, a 1A that's in between 1 and 2. whereas we were going to recommend, you know, a one A that's in between one and two. So let's, let's just talk about this a little bit more, just because we do need to leave this meeting with us some guidance so that we can, we really do need to start our analysis soon, if you know what I mean. So, yeah.
Yeah, I would say from the city's perspective, I mean, we were disappointed as well. But we, we feel that alternative three is too aggressive, hence our suggestion to find sort of a middle ground between that no action and alternative two. I also do hear what you're saying. If we can discuss another option instead that is between two and three. Again, the purpose of the EIS is that there's bookends, so there's the no action. And then there's the higher density assumed action. And then the preferred alternative is somewhere in between those three alternatives. But we don't know what that is yet. So that's partly the purpose of the study. There is a timing issue in that, once we agree to the, to the numbers, then the consultant team needs to go and convert those numbers to TAS data, which I always forget what the acronym stands for.
Traffic Analysis Zone.
Sorry, say that again?
Traffic Analysis Zone.
Yes, thank you. And then our transportation consultant has about a six to seven week timeframe for their analysis to get those transportation numbers. That way we can start building the report for a June deadline, target deadline. So I think the purpose here is sort of gauge where you all stand on, on the numbers proposed, presented to you, whether you agree that the higher end is a little too aggressive. Whether that means finding that middle ground between two and three or one, between one and two.
What would the middle ground between one and two look like in terms of color blobs? Like, are you talking about changing the definition of the purple? Are you talking about changing the light blue?
From what I understand, it's downsizing some of the purple. But again, we just got these numbers last week, so there hasn't really been much discussion that we can officially go off of.
Okay, I think I am, you know, if I understand what Commissioner, or Chair Batista is saying, there are some nodes and some critical areas that I think, you know, maybe, you know, if I were to express this in terms of color blobs, like they're kind of bluish, but maybe they want to be more purple. Is that kind of what you're saying? Like activity nodes and mixed-use things and stuff like that? That sort of expand the walkability of the city in theory? That are in alternative three but are not in alternative two? So the little node at two twenty-eighth in the inner urban, Taliswood, some stuff on forty-fourth, is that kind of, do you think that's kind of like a summation of like what you think is missing from alternative three? If we're not talking just about density, but about like?
Yeah, I, I would say that. I think especially, you know, you, you brought up a good term, you know, walkability. You know, due to my academic coursework, I've been kind of living and breathing sustainable transportation for the last few months. And so, you know, a key component of that is alternative modes and walkability, bikability, transitability. Walkability and bikability, you know, density and places to actually go to really feed into that. And, you know, you, you, you kind of have to have this critical mass to, to get a place where people want to go to in the first place. You know, we've been talking about it for years now with the town center. And unfortunately, as a city, for decades, we've really been ignoring the other, you know, the other parts of the city when, you know, when it comes to a node that people want to go to as opposed to drive away from. You know, the forty-fourth corridor would be a great example. You've got a mile-long stretch between two twelfth and two twenty-eight that's bookended by, right now to auto-oriented grocery store complexes. So you, you know, you kind of have the overabundance of grocery stores there. But they're not really walkable. Nobody really wants to walk there. And if you ever take a look at there, you can see why. Especially who wants to cross the street at two twelfth? It's, it's not a pleasant environment. There is a small commercial node, you know, in the middle around two, two twenty-fourth. The lot sizes there are, are bigger. And there's potential for, you know, potential redevelopment in the future, both on the east and west side of the street, that all of a sudden now you've got a, you've, you've got, you got a foot in the door, you know. You have, you have a node that can feed walkability for people in that neighborhood to be able to get out of their cars, partake in some commerce, you know, buy something, eat something and not have to get in their car to do that. And that's going to feed more businesses to go on, you know, want to come in. And, you know, that, it's sort of like an infection, but in a good way. And, you know, it kind of spreads. And you can, you can sort of take that concept and think about it, you know, in our other corridors as well. So I just, I'm just using that as an example. So that's why, where I say it's like, let's not drop everything because there's, there's, there's certain thing that only things that are in alternative three will sort of foster and incubate that aren't necessarily in two. So let's, you know, let's, I guess, be really methodical and cherry pick some things and then not all. So we're not hitting that crazy projection number that it sounds like nobody, nobody thinks is obtainable. But we're still achieving those goals of addressing the need for future growth, but being, you know, being as strategic as possible with it, where it doesn't overtax us to provide that infrastructure, but it still provides us with that density and sort of that critical mass that we need to grow so that in five or 10 years, when we re, relook at the, you know, what are our options now, we can, we can really say, hey, you know, three, three is on the table again. Because we've proved that this is, you know, this, this is, this is what can happen. You know, I say that as example, but I think if we're not going to, if, if, if we're going to look at one, only one thing, then I definitely think we need to reexamine the, you know, cherry pick the town center portion of that over and expand that. Cause I think we've over this. And I know it's because what the consultants in the past said too, that, oh, you don't want to, you don't want to over, overplan for commercial or retail. But I think, you know, we, it was, we weren't, we, we sort of did it a disservice to ourselves to limit where that town center boundary was. Town center used to be bigger and this is last town center process, we shrunk it up and we should have never done that. And at least the alternative three kind of gets us more back into that.
Yeah, so it's, so it's not just that you want more dots of purple scattered more broadly throughout the map. It's also the intensity of the area around the transit center as well.
Yes.
I, I agree with those comments. I think, you know, whatever the intensity, I, I guess, what are the questions we're trying to get out of this analysis then? I think is what we'd want to ask. I think walkability is central to it and also the appropriateness of level of density around the town center or around the transit center. So I actually, I mean, I'm kind of on the page of like, we sort of want a one A and a two because that's what's been recommended. And 50,000 Mount Lake Terrans in, or pterodactyls in 2044. Seems like a, I mean, I would have established that on my own as like a target just because of like walkability to grocery stores, right? That back of the math envelope I did. So I think what kind of numbers that would help us with this analysis are, you know, kind of going back to that income thing, like how many units of housing? And I think the question we're asking is like, how intensive are those purple areas? But what you're saying is also we want, where are those purple areas? And we need more of them around the city to have more places to walk to. And then also intensity around the transit center, I think, is like what we're looking at. Is that what I'm understanding?
Roughly, yeah.
Yeah. Does that help?
Yeah, and I, and I wanted to say, so I, I, we exited out of presentation view and I zoomed in on the, the more parcel-based blob maps that we've been talking about. And we will ensure moving forward that they are colorblind friendly. Appreciate the comment. I'm not sure that was, that was not previously understood, but we will make sure moving forward that everything is, is readable for all. For the sake of moving forward tonight with a recommendation that we can go back to as part of our analysis, can we take a moment maybe to identify what are those key places of higher intensity development from alternative three we might want to keep as part of alternative two? Or any guidance on where to intensify versus where to not intensify? I think as part of our conversations, we've, we've thrown out a lot of intersections and, and names of places. And it would be helpful for us, and what I'm trying to do here tonight is, is to document a bit of that so you can see what we're hearing as we move forward with taking your, your next recommendation back to the, the team.
So if I can summarize the different areas of purple that are on three but not on two, it's Taliswood, which is at thirty, forty, two thirty-six and forty-fourth. It's that little stretch on forty-fourth between two twenty-eighth and two twelfth.
Technically it's Cedar Way, but she's, she got it.
Cedar Way, yeah, I think it was forty-fourth, okay. And then there's a little blob that is kind of in that residential development at two twenty-eighth and the inner urban trail. But I think it might actually be like, I don't know, those are some single-family houses that are divided. It's, and it's in a flood zone. Like, I actually wonder if, like, if we're talking about walkability in Ballenger, if maybe that's actually like the apartments over there that are a little bit up the hill on the other side of two, of Lakeview. Yeah.
Okay.
And I think if you were to map, like, you know, if you were to look at the, I think those are the, or, do you agree, Chair Batista, that this is sort of the, the missing zones that you're talking about? Like the little extra walkability nodes?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would even, I think it's, you could even say, you know, just the, you know, the forty-fourth Avenue West corridor is not very walkable. It's, you know, it's a lot of high traffic, a lot of speeding traffic. There's a lot of traffic generated from the stores and the high school and the fact that, you know, Breyer has chosen to wall off all of their connecting streets with our city some, for some reason and refuses to open up. So they force all of their traffic onto either two twelfth or two twenty-eighth. So it's, so I, I would say that though, you know, those are the core, you know, those are the areas that are, you know, we're kind of missing right now. But you could, you could also continue those conversations and if, you know, if we're just looking at corridors, you know, the, depending if we are able to sort of take the towns, you know, the sort of the surrounding town center area off of three and put it into two, it sort of addresses some of that issue of fifty-six, you know, south of two thirty-six to the county line. There's also, you know, the walk, you know, the walkability of, you know, two twentieth. It's our, I think that's technically our busiest street in, in the city. It's, it's, it's crazy the amount of traffic that it gets. You know, we kind of had a really ambitious goal of, you know, not only looking at both sides of the freeway in alternative three, would that be something that we would still want to look at in alternative two? You know, both sides of the freeway or just focus on, I'm assuming would be the west side of the freeway for now. It's tough because no matter what you look at, you, you might feel like you're leaving something on the table or you're overlooking.
So as I understand it, these are already zoned either commercial or multifamily. We're just looking at updating the zoning to mixed use. Is that correct?
So everything on the.
Except for a couple, except for a little bit around west of fifty-eighth on two twentieth?
Everything on the west side of I-5 here in Melody Hill is all existing commercial properties. It's not cutting into any existing single-family land. We received direction though that there was interest in pursuing land use changes on the east side of I-5. So all the purple you're seeing here is on existing residential land, whether that is low-density residential or existing single-family zoning.
Cause there is, there are those condos that are east of fifty-eight that I think is existing multifamily zoning and some other like fourplexes and things like that. So that is still multifamily zone. West of fifty-eighth, kind of just north of Jack Long up to kind of the, the school up there, I think is a single-family residential. But in my mind, that's kind of like the only changes that we're making. So it's like, I don't, I don't think it's that big a change really. It's more like connecting the two, is, am I understanding that correctly?
The, I guess, the, the blob here was translated into parcel lines based on looking at block sizes. It does include, as you say, existing low-density multifamily and, and some single-family areas on, on both sides of the street.
Okay, so I think looking at the intensity of that in option one A is valid, which is what I understand you're kind of looking at anyways, like how much should the purple be, basically?
Yes, so the, the purple in alternative two here is four to six stories, which is still, it's a very high-intensity development. And in alternative three, there was direction to study four, six to eight stories, which is a much higher intensity development, which is where you're getting some of those much higher numbers. But you're still looking at multifamily development in either scenario.
Okay, and it's already zoned multifamily, just lower-density multifamily. If I remember right, is it three stories or four stories currently? I don't remember off the top of my head, I should know that, on the planning commission.
Can I say four stories? Yeah, I don't remember, off the top of my head either, sorry.
Yeah, but then also you're adding the mixed-use element to this too, where it would be more of a main street that continues across the interstate. So I think, I don't know, I think including that, like, I don't know if I would include it or not include it. I think I would still include it, right? What do you think? Because more purple does mean more walkability and that sort of makes that area of Melody Hill a little bit more walkable in theory, if we're equating purple with walkability. No, well, especially west of the interstate. East of the interstate, it's a really giant right of way and we could probably do something there, but. Yeah, I think the streetscape is a really key part of that. Sorry, is that direction? I don't.
I, what I, what I'm hearing is that there is interest in continuing to look at the area east or, yes, east of I-5 in either alternative two or alternative sort of one A. And it could be not, not studying it as part of one of the laws alternatives. It could be looking at more targeted, only looking at existing multifamily properties instead of that more holistic land use changes. It's something that we can take a more fine-tooth comb at to understand what the, the right difference is between those two alternatives to be studied.
Okay, and then after the EIS, we have some ability to move the blobs around a little bit if we need to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and while we've been talking, I've just been crunching some numbers just to give us a little bit of a, you know, kind of zoom out, look at the growth. And so I calculated an annual growth percentage of 2.4%, which is super high actually. But that is what Seattle has been growing at for the past three years, approximately two to 2.4% per year. And so for Mount Lake Terrace at that level, that would put us at about 35,000 people in 2044 total. So if we go, I don't know, if, Chair, if you can go back to the charts. If we were to grow at double that rate, that would put us in the, you know, at roughly 5%. That would put us in the vicinity of the, no, we need to go to the population chart, sorry. There you go, yeah. That would put us in the vicinity of 57,000, which is a. That would put us in the vicinity of 57,000, which is a bit above alternative two, but that would be very, very unlikely and really high to grow at 5% per year, for 20 years on average. Yeah. So I just wanted to throw that out there, and that's why, that's kind of the basis of our thinking, is that, well, alternative three, it's just too much. You know, and we didn't know that until we really calculated it all out and looked at what the capacity would be. Now, capacity is really different than reality, and you guys have all been talking about that tonight. You know, we want to have the zone capacity to really receive the growth that we're planning for. And so the growth may not happen to our capacity levels, and we understand that, but just to give you a sense of why we think three is just, alternative three is just really out of scale, but maybe, you know, something a little bit above alternative two wouldn't be, wouldn't be too bad to look at, but it would be a doubling of Seattle, Seattle region's current growth rate, just so you know.
Yeah, and I think, it sounds like we're in agreement on we want a 1A and a 2, if, but we want some things from three brought over to two for walkability, if I'm understanding correctly.
I guess it would just be depending on how you guys interpret that, so, because you threw out the term like a 2A, something in between two and three. I know that's what I would be for, so I think of a 1A as more of an in-between a one and a two.
Well, I think the direction we're looking towards here tonight is when we look at the areas of change in alternative three, what are the areas of change in alternative three that are not reflected in alternative two, that planning commission would like us to keep as part of what is studied? And we will be looking at integrating those into alternative two, and then finding a 1.2 or 1.8, some, sorry, numbers and letters, that is at a lower intensity of change than alternative two as it stands right now.
And that, and that change is likely to be the number of stories in the purple?
It is the number of stories in the purple, as well as looking at sort of the extent of the purple, whether it's removing some of the, you know, mobile home parks or other more affordable housing from the equation at the parcels as we move forward.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Like, you know, east of I-5 on 220th, like, there's all the existing residential there. Are we trying to focus it on 220th, for example, at first? Like, I think, you know, does that exist north of 220th on the west side of the interstate? Or are we focusing that more on 220th as a corridor? Like, I think that's, I think that's a worthwhile question to ask to, like, the extent of the purple.
So we have received direction tonight that we will revisit the extent of the purple on the east side of I-5, that we would like to see something, but maybe not at this extent if we look at a 1.8. As we revisit some of the other, is there an appetite to revisit the other purple blobs? Are there specific direction that the commission would like to give? Or as we move forward in revising these numbers, there are some recommendations from the consultant team in terms of where some of that might happen. So what we would like to know is sort of looking towards that future preferred land use, where are the places where we absolutely do want to see some of the land use changes proposed in alternative three? And I've heard a couple of those. I've heard the apartment complex down here at Cedar Way and 44th and 236th. This is a place where we wanted to keep some amount of increased density. That corridor on 44th is a place where we've heard that there is an appetite to keep more intense density, and then the existing apartment buildings over by on Lakeview Drive. This is a place where the commission would like to see us continue to study more intense development with potentially some commercial uses, to just, to continue the conversation of those more neighborhood nodes as part of the future land use to be studied.
Yeah, I think it's the question of the intensity of the neighborhood nodes, and that can take this terms, in terms of number of stories, it can also take the terms of extent. Like on 212th, like, I think the plat there isn't such that the entire thing is mixed use, but like, is that closer to 212th and the 52nd and 44th, for example? And do some of those others stay less mixed use or less intense?
That is something that we can look into if that is direction given tonight.
Yeah, so 1A, you know, we transfer some things from three to two in terms of walk, like, locations of the walkable nodes. And then alternative 1A is looking at the extent of the purple and also maybe its height.
Okay, so alternative two is this sort of wide swath of four to six-story multifamily development, and in 1.8, we're going to look at a little bit more targeted along those existing roads and not having so much of a wholesale change, more of a corridor approach, just a more intense development.
Right, whereas before we were updating the entire zoning of multifamily and commercial to be the same thing, mixed-use multifamily, we're looking at limiting that changing of the zones, I guess. Making it a bit more targeted to create new nodes.
So I've got two kind of quick comments or postulations for the rest of the commission while you're doing that, so I'm just kind of curious to, you know, for everybody else on the commission, are there, do you think that we're, we've missed some potential good walking corridors that need to be added that we haven't already talked about?
Say good is more aspirational.
Yeah, because I think we've kind of covered everything that, you know, isn't already, you know, we've got some circles in some new places, and then we've clearly already been talking about, you know, 220th and the town center, and we got 44th. I just want to make sure that we're not, if you guys all have maybe something, something different that's popping into your mind that we might be missing. I'm thinking specifically hyper-local, you know, think about the neighborhoods you're in, you're the experts for those, that little segment of town, we might not be as aware or quite out of the box. I mean, we kind of had this conversation at the last meeting, you know, whether it's feasible or not. I tend to think it's more feasible than not in the future at some point to add that. You can retrofit this, you know, the area around there, you know, just, you might get a little bit more creative where the station would be, especially if it's aerial, you know, you can build from underneath on either side, as opposed to putting the station where it's, you know, touching ground. It makes it a little bit more difficult there, but again, I think the political reality is, and the financial reality is, that's not something that's going to be in the next three to five years, but, you know, long-term, I think that should still be the goal. And even if the station isn't there, the fact that it is so close to other existing transit and the freeway, it, you know, it just makes sense to still target growth there. And that kind of actually feeds back to the other question that I had, or sort of comment, you know, when we're talking about, we kind of get scared, it's like, oh, the population, you know, the projected population, it looks really high, or the cost of delivering the infrastructure, that might be a little, of a bit of a sticker shock. But in a lot of these darker areas, like in alternative three, I mean, a big chunk of Melody Hill that's color-coded there is light industrial, that's not going to be changing, that's still going to remain light industrial. What could possibly redeveloped is the existing apartment complexes, just like the existing complexes, you know, on 212th and 44th, kind of in that area. But the key word there is, it's existing apartment complexes. That means the city already has the infrastructure to feed into multifamily development. It would be in a population increase, but it wouldn't be like you'd be starting from zero. So instead of having, just theory, easy, simple math here, instead of having the population of zero, and then all of a sudden the population is 100, in that area, the infrastructure's already there, and say the population's already at 50, and any kind of redevelopment might push it up to 100, or even 75. So, again, that's parsing the numbers and needing a little bit more detail that we won't get until the EIS process starts, so we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place here.
Yeah, I will say, speaking to like 212th and 220th, like, there, those, like, this isn't coming from nothing, like, there are businesses, little businesses already kind of emerging in those roads. I think, so, one of the items I'm going to add to the transportation master plan is build the 220th station, regardless of the political reality, because if we don't ask for it, no one else is. So it has to start somewhere, but I don't think we should plan around this with the expectation that a 220th station will be built, but I do think if it is built, then we revisit this. We plan for it as like a kind of lower-intensity neighborhood center, which I think there is some evidence that it's already kind of emerging that way, so I don't think we're introducing anything new there, we're just kind of guiding that process along. And then when something transformative, like a new light rail station comes in, then we look at transformative zoning. Like, in my mind, this is actually, like, alternative two is already kind of evolutionary in some ways, right? It's not revolutionary. But, you know, we're just kind of tempering, like, how evolutionary it's going to be, because the numbers are coming back that it's actually, like, the math works out that it's kind of revolutionary. So I think, to summarize, we don't expect a 220th station, but we should be pushing for it, and when it happens, we deal with it then.
I was just gonna say, sort of another question I have when we talk about, you know, the densities and, you know, the height, we had sort of this four to six range and a six to eight range. Is that taking into account, you know, what pencils out for a developer now versus what might pencil out in the future, especially as mass timber becomes more common, and it's easier and more economical for that developer to want to go to eight as opposed to six? I mean, we're only talking about a two-story difference, but in the development world, that's huge in terms of what they have to, how they have to build and design that structure now versus in the future with mass timber and how, you know, the codes may change. And again, for me, it just kind of gets back to, I don't want to leave something on the table that might be a real possibility. Is that, is that sort of beyond what this analysis will do? Because it's, it's hard to predict that part of the future, since this is more of a new thing.
Yeah, it's a challenge to predict when building code may change. It's already changing in Canada, but not here yet. And so I wouldn't want to completely abandon the idea of six to eight zoning, and so that might be something else we would want to look at regarding the high-end alternative to still consider some pockets of that in the key locations. I would also say with regard to the discussion we were just having on the 220th station, remember that our growth horizon is the next 20 years, and so while we can, I think we can, you know, be visionary and plan for another light rail station, it probably wouldn't be built within that timeframe. So again, in five years, if the commissioners are still involved, I would say let's, let's relook at that again and be ready to activate as needed to support that station in the future as well. Some of these things I feel like we're kind of on the cusp of, but maybe not quite solidly there yet, and that's just kind of the reality of where we are. The other thing I'm remembering, Sierra, where were the kind of older stock multifamily properties that we, that, there were a lot of concerns around displacement? I think we would just want to be careful. Are those up in that area? Yeah.
So many-
So when I see that corridor circled up there, I think we just want to be mindful that that was a concern that we heard, and maybe we, maybe we just want to be sensitive to that with this, with this 20-year look ahead, yeah, so.
Yeah, we can take a little bit more of a detailed look at that, and what multifamily developments or parcels might be excluded from, say, 1.8. Looking between the alternative two and the alternative 2A, and the annotations and comments that I've drawn on here based on direction given from commissioners tonight, I feel like we have sort of exhausted all the different quadrants of the city in terms of sort of what do we want to keep versus what do we want to make sure is studied and what we're okay with putting off maybe to the next time the city goes through this process. So I just want to make sure that we are getting towards a recommendation tonight so that we can move forward with this process. So I guess, are there any final comments or questions?
Maybe one, just, since we've sort of talked about, you know, maybe taking some elements of three and putting it into two, you know, areas, and we've just been jotting down, you know, blurring out sort of intersections as a general comment, you know, as a starting point. Depending on what you're looking at in terms of, oh, is this town center or is this gateway? So I just want to make sure, when I'm saying town center, I'm also including the city limits at the very end down there, which technically is Gateway, at 244th. That should be in the conversation for carrying over as much intense development as there, because that also feeds off of, you know, our neighbors to the south in shoreline, and the fact that it's already a commercial hub down there. And when you look across the street, technically on that side of the street, it's 205th and King County, they've already got multi-story mixed-use happening there, so it's almost a disconnect that they're already upzoning and building out, and we, we kind of stepped back a little bit over the last 10 years or so and decided to sort of not prioritize that area, and now we're sort of being left behind. So I just want to make sure that when I, you know, when I say town center, I kind of mean that area and that southern part of the Gateway area as well.
Yes, so that does continue to remain on, that does continue to remain on alternative three, and we haven't received any direction from this group to expand it or make it smaller, so I just left it as is, and it will continue to be studied at that sort of six-story density as we move forward with this alternative.
So I think we have some good direction. If you can entrust us with the consultant team to circle back, update these maps a bit, and then send those to our consultant team to prepare their numbers again and get started for the analysis on the EIS.
And I would just say, you know, it sounds like it's good that, you know, we're, the idea is still planning for an additional light rail station. I just remind everybody, too, that the process takes so long that we, you know, when we think about, oh, in the next 20 years, it may not happen, but the vote for it may happen, but it still might take 15 or 20 years after it's voted for, for sound transit to actually deliver it, if they continue on the same trend of how they finance and, you know, move their projects forward. But the fact that if we have our ducks in the row and already have the zoning supportive for that, that is less of, that's less, that has to happen in terms of prepping for that vote. The city has already said, hey, we're on board, we want this, we've laid the groundwork, we've put in all the additional infrastructure, everything's ready, you just need to come and build your station. And most likely, that would have probably, again, this is me assuming, very dangerous, the potential for there to be more support when it already has the back- the potential for there to be more support when it already has the backing from us and we've laid the groundwork, is probably higher than if we were just say, we want a station, but then don't do anything to back that, that opinion up, and then sound transit would be, yeah, you and everybody else. So, because I'm sure, it wouldn't surprise me if Linwood wants more stations as well, so, you know, in fact, I'm surprised there isn't one in between where the parking ride is and, whatever their next proposed station is, you know?
Ashway.
Ashway, yeah, I was like, not the mall, or Linwood's Town Center, you know, something, you know, a little bit with a shorter distance, so I'm sure they'd be chomping at the bit too, but you know what, get in line, we are here first. So it sounds like you guys kind of, in a very long circular way of getting input, you got the input we need. I know some of us have said 1A, some of us have said 2A. Just want to make sure everybody's had a chance to kind of put in their two cents, or, you know, yay, yay, I'm getting thumbs up, head nods.
It's a nice tight 15.
Just double-check with our online commissioners, those that look like still online, if they've, they got any comments. I apologize if I haven't double-checked in with you guys to make sure that you are okay with everything.
Hey, yeah, this is Commissioner Landis. I agree, I think the conversation's been great, and I think the direction we're heading is a smart one, and I'm thankful for all your comments, and sorry for any, I've been having a lot of technical issues this evening and some crying kids, so thanks for bearing with me, and, yes, good work, team.
No worries, thank you. Okay, so it sounds like you guys got what you need, obviously the first comment is keep alternative 3, but barring that, some sort of compromise, that'd be great.
All right, thank you all for that discussion. Just real quick, next up, so our next meeting's April 22nd, where we'll discuss the economic vitality goals and policy comments, and then introduce the transportation element. May 13th, we'll distribute those transportation element goals and policies, and introduce utilities and capital facilities. And then May 28th, we'll discuss transportation element goals and policies. So at this meeting, we'll most likely have our traffic engineer and transportation consultant present to lead that conversation. There's a council meeting on April 25th, where we'll present planning commission recommendations on land use and housing element goals and policies. So we'll be meeting with council on the 25th, and that's it. Any questions?
Actually, just one, kind of brought it up, you know, when you're talking about capital facilities.
Yes.
Will that actually touch on infrastructure itself, like, what, you know, what has been identified as a critical need to replace, what needs to be upgraded or increased capacity or road surfaces redone, and is that going to be included in that segment?
This discussion will be mostly focused on the goals and the policies within the plan, that more detailed information looking for will come after we do the environmental impact statement and come up with what are the project needs down the road, and there'll be continued coordination with the city staff on what it will look like to pull together the capital improvement plan.
Okay. Anybody else, any questions, comments? Okay, so that's, sounds like we're good with, actually, we kind of did item 6 and 7 together there, so, next on the agenda is item number 8, Director's Report. Director is not here.
Yes, Chris is not here, but just a reminder that April 20th, there's the event for boards and commissions, that's a Saturday, and I believe it's from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM, so that if you can put that in calendars, and, yeah. And that's all for the report.
All right, item number nine, miscellaneous business by call of planning commissioners, anybody got any miscellaneous business? Any known absences coming up? Anything else?
I request an abs on May 13th.
Did we already give you an excuse for that one?
No, I think I'm just bringing this up for the first time.
Okay. May 13th, would anybody like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we excuse Commissioner Bessner on May 13th.
All right, I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Bessner for the May 13th meeting. Does anybody like to make a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Hearing none, that motion carries, so, Commissioner Bessner, you have an excused absence on May 13th.
Thanks, everyone.
Anybody else? Hearing or seeing anything, going once, going twice? All right, with that, we'll go ahead and declare this meeting adjourned, thank you very much, everyone.
Recording stopped.